I am.
What's that? Uh, Tom's out here. A good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Public Utilities Commission for Thursday, January seventh, two thousand twenty-four. It is now three thirty-two P M. We begin with what's latest, please.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, is there any public input? Hey, correspondence, Abby? Outstanding. I move that we accept the meeting minutes from the regular meeting of December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Have a second? Any discussion? They not try your minds. All in favor of accepting minutes, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? See, no motion carries. Okay, financial report.
All right, um, so if you look at the financial report summary page, I did put a couple of notes on the bottom. Obviously, water looks messy with a deficit of two point one million dollars. Um, because we spent two point six million dollars on capital items, mostly for Bergstrom. Um, the, we're in the process of getting all those state loan documents done. So, Tom, that's being finalized this week. So then Tom's gonna start submitting for reimbursement. Going back to the beginning of that project. Um, and in January, we got the federal grant of one point sixteen dollars. So we have received that money at this point. Um, which is good, which was accredited Tom, because Tom did a ton of work to get that money. Um, so but that money's been received. So even though it looks like we're in a deficit of two point one. If you took all the capital out, we'd be in a good spot for fifty. It just the timing of getting the money back. This is gonna flip really quick once we start getting those loan payments. Um, obviously, we're gonna have continuing expenses. I think there's an invoice this month for um, go backs for Bergstrom. Um, so there's a deficit too. It's, I talked about this last month. In November, we make pretty much all the debt payments for the whole year. So, it's like a million dollars of debt that paid already of the one point one million dollars budgeted. It just goes not straight line. Obviously, we've made almost all those. So if you backed out a portion, if it was straight line, we'd be to the good by a couple thousand there. It's just the timing of it. Um, otherwise, Tom and I looked at it. There wasn't really anything else that seemed out of line. Um, most things are growing, um, as requested by the board, but the prior month total in there, you can kind of see what we did for the month. Um, and there wasn't really anything that, um, stood out to me. That's why I have.
Thank you. Have a motion to accept. We have a second. Any further discussion? Do none? Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any motion carries? Okay, so I'll go ahead and make a motion that we, uh, accept and pay the invoices in the amount of two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty-four cents. Have a second? Looking here, we have what? We have COVAX. We just talked about for two hundred and twenty thousand. Uh, eleven C B one hundred thirteen dollars twenty-six, well.
So have we had any other unexpected advances on the uh, the Bergstrom project?
Yeah. Actually, I have the right peers. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? So, uh, new business. Consideration of referral of or some underground P plus class action lawsuits, I believe our town attorney's gonna handle them.
Yes, in Tom's absence, yes, I have a bit of an update. Um, in November, Tom reported to and just directed for here was like class action suit that had been commenced against DuPont and Greenham for contaminating public water sources. Um, so, well, what has happened is that the class has been contacted. That's the public water systems in the country and, um, offered to become members of the class. Actually, we could fall by not taking action to come on that. The last one you could opt out if you want to bring a separate lawsuit. So, um, the town of Bethel is in the class for these two possible sources of revenue. Um, so thirteen point nine or so billion dollars has been set aside, and this is the collective lawsuits to satisfy these claims. So the next step is to determine by testing, um, whether any P plus is in any part of the public water system. And then to submit claim forms and determined by the level of P plus and the flowage through the well, there's a sort of a matrix where they are going to be able to determine what they award to the municipality in our case. So the next step for us is Tom is going through the process of testing the wells with the criteria they've, they've more. And that information is organized and put on the forms, and then that's submitted. Ultimately, if you get forms back, um, once they determine which, um, which there, there are two parts, two ways you could go. So they determine based on the information you input, where you should be in the settlement and from which appropriate funds you might be eligible to get funds. So, um, so the purpose of this being on the agenda then is to authorize or rather to refer a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen that, um, that the first line could be appointed to sign these claim forms so that when we're ready and hopefully the end of the month, beginning of next month, will be prepared to put that information together and submit claims on behalf of the, the water department. And I just wanted to tell you then that in terms of the process itself, that Tom is, is, um, really collecting this information and he's submitting this, um, you know, and putting all this together with, um, the, uh, help of labs, of course, and he's gotta have all the lab reports as well to include. So it's probably gonna be Tom doing that piece. Um, I'll assist him with anything that appears to be legal to qualify these claims. And then, um, you know, then they get signed and submitted. So that's, that's the team.
Is there a deadline as to when you have that submitted?
You, it, it's sixty days from date of final judgment, which hasn't happened yet. So they're going through this process, but you know, but we might have, sometimes in these situations, it's better to submit when you're ready rather than to wait till the very end, because there's gonna be a ton of stuff coming in, I'm sure. And i- if you can imagine, they're gonna have to sit through all of these claims and, you know, determine, you know, um, who gets what. So it's gonna be quite a process. So I, because since we're ready, we'd like to just get in the queue.
Mel, do you know anything regarding the testing? Can we use the testing we've had so far or do we have to?
Tom seems to think that we, some of our testing that we have done will be acceptable, and it's only the sources that haven't been tested that would have to be tested.
What's the dollar amount again? Was that billions?
Yeah, but there are a lot of public water sources in the country.
Number of plaintiffs, but it's probably, we don't know with eighty-three dollars.
Tom told me yesterday that's what the calculation that they put out there. The town of Ethel portion would be seven hundred thousand, and then I said the same thing. I'm like, yeah, but it's probably capped that. Might get a portion of that. But he said there also could be a multiplier. Could be huge money, but really, no offense to attorneys and everything, but the attorneys are probably getting a lot of it, you know, that everybody else that applies will get whatever.
Probably cheaper if we don't have any P plus.
We have something that costs a lot more to remediate it than they're gonna give you.
Well, the other part of this too is, we're looking at the, uh, the federal level speeding sign now, point four. And when that happens, yeah, we're kind of right on the board. We've had one of them tested before and the others have tested it too, but we're gonna be in there somewhere.
Yeah, if I may, there's, um, there's more areas that we need to test. We have to, uh, we have to, we have to take and test Eureka. We have to, uh, test Chestnut. And then we have to also test the other two, uh, wells at the well field.
So we have to test our surface water too? Because you're a backup still?
That's what they're looking at, yeah.
Interesting.
That, that's what you told me a couple of days ago.
Okay.
But we've got to, we've got to put Chestnut online and also Eureka, and then also be able to see one of the two other wells.
Because I believe they were offline because they're backup wells, so they have to be put online fluorinated. The chlorine has to go through the system and then they have to be retested, correct?
Well, any other remediation that has to be done to those?
Fluorinate them, flush in the waste and then take a sample. Um, we think we can get the two wells, the two, like, one A and one B. We can, we can do that without taking a lot of that offline, but we can just flush it away and then take a sample.
Ellie, when you see Tom again, on the surface water, probably should look at both dry weather and wet weather. For sampling and not just rely on one.
Yeah, I, I, well, I don't think we have that window right now. That's the only problem, you know. I think, I think it's gotta be done by February, like this sixty-eight figure that they're, they're, they're talking about. But, uh, I suggested if we have to put it into the system at Eureka, I feel much better doing it in the winter, because summertime, there's a bit of an odor to the water. So, uh, and then Chestnut, we, we, without even putting it into the system, we can, we can put it right down to Long Meadow just before the tanks and get a sample one of that. But yeah, I don't, I don't think we have the window to, uh,
Well, you can get the wet weather one for sure.
So with that, I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion. Are you, are you done or you?
I, I am. I am. I'm listening to any questions, but yes, you've got a motion here, Captain.
Okay, so, uh, I move to recommend to the Board of Selectmen authorize Daniel Carter as first elector of the town of Ethel to execute the claim forms, including initial submissions, resubmissions, additional claim forms for specific funding sources, and related documentation as may be reasonably required to facilitate the claim submission process in connection with two class action proceedings against three M and DuPont identified as I N, um, R E aqueous film foaming phones products viability litigation, M D L number two, semicolon, eighteen, M N, two eight, seven, three, R M G. And to authorize any other actions by which, excuse me, actions which the Board of Selectmen may deem appropriate to facilitate the claim submission process for the Bethel Water Department. Do you have a second? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, um, U C Capital Project status summary. Are you gonna do that there? Brad or?
I, I have a couple of things.
Awesome.
Yeah, you know, from what, uh, from what you, uh, from what Tom had said for me to pass on, number one, part, part two. Uh, we did finally get the gas meter in. We've got the generator in. Uh, it, it's running. Um, they, they had a problem with one of the boards. We think that maybe it was in shipment of the, uh, transfer switch. They just put the new board in today and everything is, uh, up and running. You know, we have a couple, you know, we've got to get the arms set up on it, but other than that, as of today, our generator is operating. So we're in group and shape there. Uh, as for Bergstrom, um, they've, uh, they've done the footings. They've done the, the foundation walls. Uh, all the steel tank, uh, internal piping has been installed. And also all the electrical conduit has been, so they're, they're moving forward. I mean, it was one section of all that they haven't done yet. But I think they had to get in there with the excavators before they, before they, but I just went over there today and the footage, the, the forms are, are there, so.
Okay, I move we accept the, uh, Capital Project status summary. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No motion carries. So Director's Board.
I think it was all, I think it was all.
That was all it together? Okay. So I guess I should say, uh, move we accept the Director's Board. Set the record, yeah. All in favor of submitting Director's Report? Is aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries. Um, Utility Supervisor Report.
Uh, we had a couple of issues this, this month. Uh, we had a service leak on Taylor Avenue. Uh, what's, what seems to be happening are the saddles that were installed on the transite are starting to rot away. Uh, this is probably about the fourth or fifth one I've seen in the past couple of years. Uh, they're, they weren't made at that time. They weren't made in stainless steel. And the rods that go around the, the, uh, the main are actually starting to rot out. So that was the issue we had. Uh, it only ran for a day and Pembroke came and, uh, we, we put a, a new Band-Aid on it with the tap on it. So that, we have that taken care of. Uh, yesterday with all the rain coming down Nashville Road, uh, which a lot of the manholes were submerged. Uh, we had a sewer backup. We popped that open and probably about twelve o'clock yesterday with no problem at all. Uh, we got that back running. Uh, we had no problem keeping off with the five inches of rain that we did get. Uh, pumps were working max. They were pumping twenty-eight hundred ounce per minute. Uh, the wet well did, um, go under, you know, the grinder pumps and everything, but we were able to maintain it for, uh, I think we took it about eighteen hours. Um, what I think the issue that we're, we're finding, and this is what we were out the past two days looking, um, s- uh, subsection thirteen, which is basically that, I think it's called Sinbok, uh, Brook that goes down along fifty-three and then dumps out by Beach Street. I think that's what it's called. Um, that was so flooded that some of the manholes that are, that go through that area, you think were under water. Um, I don't think it, it, I mean, it's, it's one of those things we can't do anything about. I talked to Tom about it yesterday and, uh, he is, um, budgeted to have that section looked at this year. So I think the only issue we're gonna have in there, because it's only happening in these heavy, heavy rains. I think these manholes are going under, and I think that some of the, some of the, uh, dog houses are starting to leak. So it might be a case of, of going in and sealing up the manholes. And, and I, I know they have, uh, an insert that they can actually put in the manholes. But it's, it's only happened, happening under these crazy rains. Uh, and, and I'm gonna guess we're probably tomorrow night we're gonna have the same issue. Uh, the guys aren't keeping up.
Well, it's been cause I, I mean, I've been driving down Nashville for twenty-two years. I've never seen two times now, like a pond in the middle of the, just any, any idea why?
You know what? I was talking with Dibble a little bit about that, and, uh, we've got water coming out of spots that we've never had water coming out of, because the ground is just so saturated. It, it's like that pond just past the condos there before Bethel Woods. That thing, when that overflows, that is wiping it out. I, I've never seen, and, and Bobby even said the same thing as you, that, that we've never seen that much water come by Nashville. But we watched it yesterday. As the rain stopped, we watched it go down. We were still pumping at, at maximum. Then when I think it got down below all them manholes, because there are a couple of them right there in the middle of the street that are submerged all the time, even the basins are taken. It, it's just that much water. Um, Nashville cleared as fast as it could build up, I mean, within a couple of hours. So we know we're good from, from point A to point B, but the problem was our sewer went.
Yeah, I was just shocked to, you know, big times are on, like I've never seen water on.
I, I've been chasing two weeks. I've been chasing one up on, on Spring Hill that I've sampled. There's no chlorine in it. Talking to the homeowners in the area, uh, they talked about there was some work being done on, on the upper part of Spring Hill, but it's one spot that I've never seen water come out. I've seen it come down from the tower up there at the top of the hill, but I've never seen it coming out of the ground the way it is. And we have another spot on, um, Highland. That whole mountain is just saturated, and it's, it's coming out like, this was at the bottom of Island at about number seven Highland. When I was out trying to get a sample to check for chlorine, the homeowner come out. He said, I can judge the amount of water coming out of the, of the ground by my some pump. He says, when my some pump stops running, then I don't see the water coming anymore. So you know, you just know the mountains are saturated. Yeah, it, it's just, it's just unbelievable.
Did that pond by the condos overflow?
It did, yeah.
Because I know years ago, they wanted us to flush that line out. He was concerned it might be flooded. How would they ever pay for that line?
I don't, uh, uh, but I, I know what you're, you're talking about, and that's where it's coming from. It's coming, it's coming from the overflow, and it's going, it's going right across the front of the, the condos, and it, and it's like a river. Yeah, I mean, by rights, they should probably block it off. That's how much water at that point is swimming through there.
Kind of one that pipe, pipe.
What?
That pipe it probably.
It could be. Um, oh, we start reading next week. Um, we're working the MIUs as we can get them, and we had a couple of people on vacation over the holidays. Um, Tom and I have talked, what we may do is we may take one guy every week and just solely put him on the MIUs and plus the girl, the girl help for getting us, um, uh, appointments. So we really haven't got a plan, but other than that, that we're gonna try to put one guy per week. I'm just staying with that.
Did they talk, human resources about, had somebody part-time?
You know what? I don't know whether Tommy's talking about that or not.
I'm just wondering because, yeah, part of the rec, they have some help on, also off. I wonder if there's a way to have, you know, get somebody in part-time to do.
We have the budget for it.
Well, there was, there was from the local.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, right.
Yeah, Kelly, the utility doesn't usually have part-time work, so the union would have a great, we just.
Since I've been here, we haven't, we haven't ever had, uh, any part-time people in eighteen years. I mean, it's something to look into in the future, but.
How many do you have to change though?
And, uh, how many?
We, we could be, and we could probably be around fifteen hundred because, you know, we, we beat down two hundred, and the next time we do a raid, two hundred more come up.
And how many, how many can a, an employee do in a day? Realist, like what should you do a day?
I think eight. So probably eight, and that, and that's, you know, trying to, trying to set up appointments, you know, if they're not, if they're not hanging off the bed outside the house, then when you're gonna get appointments, you get it.
So you've got about fifty weeks left of these. A little under, yeah, a little under fifty weeks.
But as that process goes on, you've got others.
Yeah, but at sixty weeks, I gave you five hundred extra. It's fifteen hundred.
All right.
Okay, um, I'm on top of it.
Uh, you know, I, I, I think that, you know, we appropriated extra money for that, uh, you know, maybe we need to look at doing a little contract for some electrician to do.
Yeah, we talked about it a few times about bringing in somebody else.
Yeah. But that's the only way you can have it.
There's, there's not, there's not much to open them up.
No, it's nothing. They're stream wires. Just finding the union, changing them all, and then going back to test them.
Yeah, I had asked a, a retired electrician at Dina's interest, and he said no.
Yeah, retired. Yeah, you know, I, yeah, we were talking about this last month. Where does it fall in the, um, utility scan? Does it fall for like alarms? Because it, it doesn't fall with an electrician. Is it more voltage alarms? Is it, is it alarm companies? You know, many, what I'm saying is, where does it fall to get that?
Well, they're battery operated, right?
Yeah, they have batteries in them, yeah.
Low voltage.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's not a big deal. You don't need a permit to install these things now, you know.
Right.
And again, I, I don't know what the rules are with the union, but based on the quantity that we need to do, if we turn this into a capital project, will we be able to put it out to bid with the various electrical companies? Because maybe you have some electrical companies that have thirty people working on it. They may say, this is a great project for me, you know, and I could do fifteen hundred of them in a month with my guys. And, and I mean, because I understand capital, you know, isn't supposed to be recurring, but you know, once you change these, how long do they last? Over ten years?
Supposedly lasts twenty years, and that's why they're into the expensive.
I mean, I mean, it might be something that we could look as a capital project just to get. You know, even if we say, look, we want a thousand of them changed, you know, and put it out to bid and see, see what the number is. I mean, I guess you have to benefit, you know, and see what's the, the, the cost, but if we could do that, we might be able to get it done a lot quicker, because there's a lot of companies out there that have a lot of guys who, I'm sure they want to.
You know, I, I even thought of somebody like Tommy Kane. You know, like, like, you know, he's got a ton of people that work for him. They're, they're not union. There's no benefits, so that hourly rate may be reasonable. You know, I'm, I'm just throwing Tommy out there. I'm just thinking, there's gotta be somebody out there.
Well, nothing stops us from doing an RFP and putting it out there with the regular star.
Just be interested to see what, you know, I mean, obviously, they'd have that proper license and insurance, right?
Yeah, that's the big one. You're going into people's homes.
And just see if anyone, you know, wants to bid it. I mean, we could always just see, get an idea what, what the cost is, because I mean, your, your guys are always gonna have work. I mean, sub breaks every day. They're out there reading, you know, doing what they have to do every day. You know, they might look at it as great. You know, you're taking, you're taking, you know, some stuff off me, and we're getting it all done.
Yeah.
We have any, yes, I think, uh, any idea of what percentage are in the home versus outside the home typically?
Probably about half, probably fifty percent each way, and then there's pits too.
Yeah, so we'd have to look at that too, if you put an R P out, because obviously, an outdoor one that you don't need an appointment for, it's a lot easier for the contractor than.
No, I mean, you still got a lot of nobody. You know, most people, you know, I don't really like just people show up at my house and start looking under the lion's hiding to see if.
You're right.
I might come out and have something to say about that.
But it's maybe, hey, this day and age, you gotta be careful, you know, because there's so many shady people out there that wanna get into the house somehow, and that, that they're using water utility, electric utility, gas utility to get in the door.
Yeah, I'm sure these big companies are bonded to, right?
Yes, one of our employees.
Yeah, so why don't we, um, for the next one, we talked to how many comes back. We look at a number and come up with what the number will be, bringing that to the next, and let's get moving on this. Let's, right. We talked about for a long time, even back and forth.
Yeah, I mean, there's enough local electric, electrical companies that would probably welcome. You know, right?
Or when there's slow and wetter, you know, that's what I'm saying, add them on the books, you know.
Some of these companies have thirty guys, where, you know, guys and girls are, are.
Kelly, what size vein was that on Taylor?
Uh, six inch trans, uh, excuse me, eight inch transite. Yeah, it's, um, Tom, uh, um, Rich, it's, it's, um, it's cast to the tracks. And then it goes to transite, uh, eight inch transite, then it drop, drops to six inch ductile to go up to, uh, Draper's.
Yeah, he put that.
Is that transite at fifty-three too, now by condos?
Um, yes.
Yeah.
Um, wait a minute, fifty-three, you're talking about which condos?
I was April, it's just before there.
Yeah, that's, there's a section in there from Cherry Lane back to about a hundred and four, you know, the numerical. That's four inch only.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, it's about thirteen hundred feet, because I did measure it off, but it, but that's four inch transite there.
Is, is that the one where we don't know where is the road?
Um, it's not that we don't know where it is. It's deeper than, than the eight over top of it. But the problem is, there's a crossover valve there between the four and the eight, and we have no idea where it is. Um, and when he brought it was alive, I talked to him, and he even said for years, so, so to shut down the four or the eight, we have to shut both, uh, at, uh, at B Street. And then we would shut Cherry Lane.
Well, you had mentioned too, one time maybe somebody like Pembroke, where they could just dig a small hole and suck the dirt out and find out.
Yeah.
Find the line.
But I, I do know that in the few weeks we've had on the four, that it's like just below the eight, and it's, it's pretty deep. Not that that matters. I'm just saying it's pretty deep.
Why do you think, I just, why do you think it was so deep?
Maybe they built up the road over the years. So that's the original pipe. That's the original four inch that went through there.
They had it built up because it's smart, the wet.
Yeah, could be, yeah, sure.
Yeah.
But it's, it's from Cherry Lane. When we did Cherry Lane, when we put the, uh, twelve inch on Cherry Lane, when we brought it out to the intersection, we surrounded it with by eight inch valves and then stepped it down to beat the four. So alls we have to do is take, pull the reducer out and be able to run the main right up to road.
Uh, I'll talk to you. I had an idea about something. Maybe you can know the time offline.
Yeah.
I move we accept the, uh, Utility Supervisors Report.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Any opposed, none, motion carries? I would accept a motion to adjourn.
I can say.
All in favor? You both, none, we stand adjourned at uh four oh two P M. Thank you, everybody. Up for recording.